I call to order the December 2022 legislative meeting of the Media Borough Council. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that we remain standing. We've lost a longstanding figure in Media Borough this past couple of weeks. The Reverend Warren Mays, who is the pastor at the Second Baptist Church, unexpectedly passed away. He was more than a man of the cloth, he was a man of the town. He held the town dearly. And he has been before us several times. He has said the invocation for several of us at the time that we were sworn in as councilpersons. We will miss him. I ask for a moment of silence for Reverend Warren Mays. Please remain standing. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, thank you. I ask that we please have a moment of silence for two fallen firefighters in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania last week. Zachary Paris, age 36, who was the Assistant Fire Chief, and firefighter Marvin Gruber, age 59. Both of them were from the volunteer fire company of, I want to make sure I get this right, the community fire company of New Tripoli. They're located in northern Dehigh County. They were fighting a fire in the neighboring county of Scoopel County when they lost their lives. I think we need to recognize that we've lost these two individuals, but it very well could have been one of our firefighters who valently served our community. So I'd ask for just a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment and privilege of the floor, we do have a couple of housekeeping items that we need to attend to. We have two sets of meeting minutes from the previous month. Do I hear a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes from this past month as submitted?
Is there a move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the November 2022 workshop meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. And we also had a set of council meeting minutes from our legislative meeting of this past month. Do I hear a motion to approve the November council legislative meeting minutes as submitted?
So moved. So moved. Sorry.
So it's removed. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the November 2022 council legislative meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Some of you at home might be wondering where that disembodied voice is coming from. We actually have several persons who are present but not physically present. Councilman Mark Pakoff is with us electronically, and it was his voice that you heard singing out aye to both of those motions. Our solicitor as well as our engineer are also on the phone. Like many of us, they are under the weather, and they thought that the wisest course of action was to be present electronically but not in person at the meeting tonight. And we appreciate their decision. All right, so we now have a public comment and privilege of the floor. As always, we will turn to Karen Rapinoe, the administrative manager for the borough, and ask her whether or not we have received any comments or questions electronically at our email address, which is comments@mediaborough.com.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. We will be asking a similar question at the end of this meeting. So if there's anybody out there who wishes to send in an email question or a comment, you may do so at the comments@mediaborough.com address. And Karen will read those questions to us at the end or towards the end of the meeting. Please remember that you need to identify yourself by name and address. If you do not give your address, we will not read your question or your comment. All right, so now if there's anybody who is physically present and wishes to address council, please come to the microphone. Tell us who you are, where you live, and what's on your mind. Judy? Microphone. We hid the microphone today.
Okay. Okay. I'm Judy Fowler. I live at 325 South Monroe Street. And I am here to say that I am thrilled tonight, you're hopefully going to pass the budget item for a study of affordable housing. As you know, I've said many times, affordable housing is an urgent, pressing need for the community, and I want to see media remain and become even more everybody's hometown. I think this is just a wonderful first step, and I'll be addressing you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anybody else who wishes to address council, please come to the microphone. Tell us who you are, where you live, and what's on your mind. Seeing that there are no other takers, we'll move along then to the Borough Manager's Report. The Borough Manager's Report tonight is different than the other 11 Borough Manager's Reports that we have throughout the year in that our manager will present our 2023 proposed budget, which we will be voting on later this evening. So, Manager Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Before I jump into the budget, I actually just wanted to make a very brief announcement about a grant that the Media Borough was awarded from Delaware County Greenways Program and the round, or Grant Round Three of the Greenways Program. And this is for the Philip Green Park and the rehabilitation of that park. And we won $126,000. And that will be combined with the DCNR grant that we have, which will drastically or basically fund the entire project, give or take, once we get the final cost estimate. But this is just another great example of the planning that we do, the aggressive way we go after grants to fund our capital projects. Okay.
Before you begin, if there's any member of council who wishes a swing around from behind this table so that they have a better view of the screen, now might be a good time to do it.
Excellent. All right, so I am pleased to present the fiscal year 2023 operating capital recreation and liquid fuels budgets for Media Borough. And for those of you who are at workshop, this is a repeat of that presentation. But we wanted to make sure we were able to do it today on camera so that others can come back and watch it at their convenience. So I just want to start by saying with the hard work of professional staff and the Finance Committee, we are presenting a balanced budget this evening. At a high level, the general fund is about $10.9 million. It represents a 9% increase from last year. The capital fund is at $1.9 million, which is over a 50% decrease from last year's capital budget. The liquid fuels and the rec funds are essentially static from last year. This represents a $13 million allocation across all funds. For context, I thought it would be helpful to look at our history over the last five years. To orient you to this graph, if it's the first time you're looking at it, the bar chart on the left is the general fund, and the capital fund is on the right. The left column is 2019, and you're going to move along in time to the right pale blue column, which is the projected budget for 2023. Our general fund was static for the past three years. However, in 2023, it includes a 9% increase due to revenue enhancement, which I will discuss in a few moments. And our capital fund, as I mentioned, is a significant decrease from last year, and it peaked in about 2020 and has been declining since then. The budget for the rec fund has been static for the last five years. For liquid fuels, you can see the large increase in 2020, marked by a dramatic decrease in resources from the state over the last several years. Of our four funds, I'd like to start by diving deeper into the general fund. Nearly 70% of our revenues are from taxes. Property taxes only represent about 18%. The Act 511 taxes, which is the mercantile, the business privilege, earned income tax, LST, and transfer tax, represents 50% of our anticipated revenue. The vast majority of that is EIT, which is projected to bring in $4.3 million next year. The next largest revenue category is fees and service, such as parking meters, building permits, police lockup fees, crossing guard reimbursements. And of this category, meters is projected to bring in $1.4 million, which is up from $800,000 this year. If you'll excuse me for one second, I just need to get my cursor back, so. There we go. There are a few key points that are important to highlight. First, this budget includes a parking rate increase from $1 an hour to $1.50 an hour, with enforcement going to 8:00 PM to capture the dinner crowd and the revenue from that timeframe. Notably, this budget includes a .19 property tax millage increase. The overall millage rate is going from 1.81 to 2.00 mils. The impact is that it will increase homeowners' property tax, but by our analysis, on average, it may be about $65 per household next year. Of course, that is dependent on the individual property assessment. But on average, across the whole of the residential properties, it will be about 65 per household next year. We anticipate slight increase in EIT revenue based on historical trends of our local economy. And the additional revenue was needed to help create a sustainable source for our capital projects and to help build the reserve over time. Here's a high-level look at our general fund expenditures. The police budget, including their pension contribution payment, is about 35% of our budget. Public works, which is a combination of sanitation and highway, is about 15%. General government category is about 20%. And this includes items such as insurance, pensions, Borough Hall, kiosks, salary for governing body. I will note that within this category, the borough has earmarked 8% of new operating revenues to pay for capital projects and help build up the capital reserve over time. As always, salaries and benefits are our largest expenditures, representing about 50% of the budget. This budget has a placeholder of 4.5% salary increase for personnel across the board. However, we are still in the middle of union negotiations, and wherever that lands, the budget will have to be adjusted at mid-year. Medical premiums will remain the same in 2022, and the insurance costs are our best estimate at this time. The debt service will be around $744,000 every year. There are some key points to consider on the expenditure side that I want to highlight. So last year, the fire company hired paid firefighters during the daytime in order to ensure full coverage for our residents. And council is continuing to support this by helping to fund the three full-time and two part-time firefighters, also continuing to fund the stipend program and the EMS benefits as in the past. In addition, it includes approximately $90,000 of new EMS costs to help keep an advanced life support ambulance coverage in the borough. We are fully funding all the positions next year in the police department, which include the hiring of three new patrol officers and the promotion to fill one lieutenant position and one sergeant position. Under the codes department, we are including $25,000 for the affordable housing study and $10,000 for, to finalize the implementation of the Form-based code. And as I previously mentioned, there is an $825,000 planned transfer dedicated to capital projects. Okay, on to our capital fund. It is a $2 million budget, and the majority of capital fund is funded by grants. So it's $1.1 million there from grants. And we are utilizing that $825,000 of new general fund revenues to fund the capital projects in 2023. Any additional net revenue over expense at the end of this year and any future years would go towards building our capital reserves over time. As a reminder, capital fund will be used for large capital purchases and capital projects. The 2023 capital budget is significantly pared down to stay within our fiscal constraints. I mentioned $2 million, about 50% decrease from last year. And this pie chart shows expenditures by function. And you can see we are investing in asset replacements, in infrastructure, like projects like sidewalks, roads, and facilities, and some strategic community development projects. For a detailed view of projects, we've listed them here by a function, excuse me, department. We will continue to invest in our facilities, in our vehicle replacement program, our road program. We will continue to invest in infrastructure projects, such as stormwater projects. And we are finalizing a few construction projects, such as CMAC, CDBG Orange, and West State Street. However, I do want to just mention that we have delayed a number of important projects, such as Plum Street Mall. That will be pushed back to 2024. Traffic calming projects on Jefferson, Providence. There's no street mural funding. In Wayfinding, we've canceled the eight decorative intersections. We've scaled back some of the Borough Hall maintenance and delayed the Diamond Park awning, some Heritage Park gateways, State Street planters. There's a list, and it was hard choices. But these are the right things to do as we right-size our capital program to the available resources. Since we're talking about the capital budget, I wanted to take a moment to discuss the completion of the five-year capital improvement plan. The CIP has helped us right-size our capital program for the next five years. We went through a prioritization process. We went through a very long detailed process, actually, over the last eight months or so, where we prioritize asset preservation and replacement. We prioritize public safety and quality of life projects and projects with outside funding and a timing urgency. And so we had to cut out low and moderate priority projects, and we shifted some of those projects back due to the fiscal constraints. And the result is the CIP report that I'm quite proud of, the 2023 to 2027 report. We had a lot of help. I want to thank certainly all the department heads and the Finance Committee and everyone who, you know, gave us information to help put this together. The listing of projects is actually too extensive to put up here on the screen tonight, but it is in your full report, and we will be, you guys will be voting on that later this evening. So instead, I'm actually showing a key table from the report, which is displaying our fiscal capacity. It shows the beginning balance and the ending balance of our capital reserve account. And if you note the yellow row, which is the transfer in of $825,000 in 2023, and $800,000 every year afterwards, that is what represents the new revenue that we have identified as a sustainable source for the CIP. The key takeaway here is that the ending balance is small, but it's stable every year. And at the end of the year, if there are any net revenue over expenses, these funds will also be transferred into the capital reserve account to help build up the reserves over time. So we will be using this report to help guide us for our long-term planning. Assuming you all pass it. All right, so back to the fiscal year 2023. The total rec fund revenue and expenditures are anticipated to be $76,000. Most of the expenditures in the rec program are related to various programs that they offer throughout the year, including donations to youth sporting organizations and subsidizing the summer camp for media residents. Excuse me. Donations to the youth sports increased from $3,000 to $6,000, and it's because we are returning to the higher level of support for youth sports, which was temporarily paused due to COVID. Finally, we are expecting about $152,000 in liquid fuels funding from the state to be spent on our 2023 road program. $152 is the state allocation. Oh, it's actually $149 plus a couple extra thousand from the funding formula, but we don't need those details. So looking forward, and in conclusion, the borough's cash flow position is good. The borough has developed this five-year CIP that prioritizes the capital needs over the next several years and deliberately slows the pace of our capital projects. The borough has earmarked 8% of new operating revenues to pay for capital projects. And with this sustainable source and by adding any net revenues over expenses annually, the borough can rebuild the capital reserve account over time. Moving forward, council may want to consider monitoring the fire company's costs, both the long-term fiscal impact of full-time paid firefighters, but also of providing emergency medical services. Secondly, we should monitor other municipalities who may assess EIT and its fiscal impact on the borough. And we've heard some rumors that some of our neighbors are strongly considering that in the near future. And then finally, continue to monitor the fund balance and continue to set aside at least 8% of operating revenues annually for capital projects. So that concludes the budget presentation. Happy to answer anything now or later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Now might be a good time to turn the lights back on, Dave. Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for our manager at this time?
Just a comment, if you don't mind. Thank you, Brittany. That was a very crisp and cogent and comprehensive presentation of the budget. I hope you all took it in. It can be kind of dry, but I think she did an excellent job of describing what we did this year. And I'll probably say it again during my regular remarks, but the extent of staff buy-in and enthusiasm over these changes has been remarkable to me. And I think it's a testament to how engaged everyone that works here are. I mean, they want to see this happen. They want us to be better at what we do financially, and it's been very good to see. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for our manager at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to our engineer's report. Kevin Mattson, who is present with us remotely. Mr. Mattson, are you still with us?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. A few updates on some capital projects. Work is scheduled to be completed, which is great news, next week at Jefferson and South, where we're doing the rain gardens and associated stormwater improvements. The contractor has made great progress aside from having a few days of holiday, Thanksgiving, day after Thanksgiving, and a few rain days. But again, he's on schedule to complete this project by the end of the year, which is great news. Further, the projects for our lighting improvements along Orange Street and State Street, perhaps you have noticed in town, an interesting-looking machine that drilled in the conduits and the conduit wire. So that work is complete, which is great news. It was very, very quick. And the council, again, with some good grace, allowed the construction network with the directional drilling, also coordination with PennDOT because Orange Street is a state road. We had to get a special permit to do that. So again, good thanks to PennDOT for being flexible with us on that project. That's good news. And then, I think for the end of the year, we may or may not be able to see the installation of the vortexes. We're on schedule. It's just a matter of seeing whether or not the weather will cooperate. So unless there's any questions, that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Does any member of council have any questions or comment for our engineer at this time?
I have one. I noticed that the stormwater improvement at Orange and Jefferson, I mean, it's been proceeding well, but the traffic control has been not very well handled. I mean, there essentially is no traffic control, so each car sort of manages its own way through. It's great traffic calming technique, I must say. But since I drive that way a lot, I just noticed that there's never any flagmen out or anything like that. Not a big deal.
Mr. Mattson, did you hear that comment?
I did. So again, I would like to thank our local residents who have been going through this intersection. Some have rerouted a little bit about what they're doing. But there are such dynamic changes from work on one side to the street to the other. It's been a bit of a challenge. But again, I'm thankful that our residents have been mindful of the construction crews that are out there. Chipwad is maintaining about six to eight laborers out there in the field. So again, it has the side effect of actually common traffic. But again, it's a work in progress that hopefully will be completed by next week.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any other comments or questions from members of council? It was almost like you were here, Mr. Mattson, speaking through a burlap sack, but it's almost as if you were here. We also have our solicitor, who is present by way of electronic means. Mr. Solicitor, Mr. Scott, are you prepared to give your report?
I am prepared to say that I have no report tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from members of council for our solicitor at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to the mayor's report. Mayor McMatt.
Thank you. During the month of November, we had 657 complaints. I'll read a couple of them. One is 38 traffic accidents, eight public drunkenness, 61 medical emergencies, and 56 assistance to other police departments. I want to read this. It's Christmas time, and a lot of things happen around this time. They don't happen through the rest of the year. So this is what the chief asked me to read. "The holidays are quickly approaching, and I want to remind all the residents and guests of Media that along with the increase in the holiday spirit comes an increase in crimes. Please let everyone know to keep their surroundings and contact the police department if something seems to be out of the ordinary." We already had one resident victimized after they made a high-end purchase at the King of Prussia Mall and were followed back to Media where their car was broken into. Scammers used this time of the year to take on the advantage of residents' kindness during a holiday season. If anyone receives a call from anyone requesting, demanding money, or want to be paid by gift cards or Bitcoin, Bitcoin, yeah, and please call the Media Police Department before purchasing anything. No utility, PICO, Alcoa, et cetera, or government agency, police courts and others, will require immediate payment without prior notice. The officers of the Media Police Department will be happy to verify the legitimacy of anyone requesting money. And I'm sure we've all noticed that we're getting more phone calls now at this time of the year than we get through the rest of the year. I get about 10 a day. I'm really popular. So it's just something that the chief wants everybody to be aware of. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions or comments from members of council for our mayor? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to the council committee reports. We will start, as always, with Councilmember Paul Robinson.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'll try to keep my report relatively short tonight. First, as I always do every single month, I reference the opportunity for our residents and neighbors of Media Borough who would be interested in serving with the Media Fire and Hook &amp; Ladder Company to step forward. Always can use volunteer firefighters, but the company can also use administrative help. So if anyone who is interested in serving your community, it would be an outstanding way of doing it. The chief was not able to give me a report this evening. He was actually working. But I will reiterate what I know he wants me to say is, as the mayor referenced, it's the holiday season. Be aware of extension cords. Be aware of your Christmas tree and/or type of holiday things that you have in your house that are electrified. When going out, make sure you turn these things off. It is amazing how many stupid little fires that will occur this time of year because we're not paying attention. So please, take your time, turn things off before you go out. That's it with regards to announcements, agenda items. My agenda is we have the opportunity to apply for a ARPA H2O grant through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. These were additional funds that were provided by the federal government to the Commonwealth that have not been utilized as of now. So the state is going out for a new grant opportunity. This is one of the few This is one of the few times that the grant application will be applicable to what we call gray matter. It is concrete, things of that nature for stormwater projects. So without a doubt, you know, we have several stormwater projects in the works, and it is our anticipation to apply for the grant and see where the grant might be most applicable to the projects. There is also the possibility that we will find that the requirements of the grant and/or the projects that we are doing, that the grant might not be suitable for that case. However, you know, if you don't try, you're not going to at least have the opportunity. So I'll make a motion tonight that we submit to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for our ARPA H2O grant for the Ridge Road Stormwater Project.
Motion's been made. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning the motion?
Yeah, I have a question, Paul. The agenda item is specific to Ridge Road, but then in your comments, you seem to suggest that maybe we'd submit something else?
It's the project that we're focusing on, but there is the opportunity that if there's others, that we might be able to modify the application at a further date.
We -- I mean, is there -- the deadline is soon, so that...
I would have to defer deadlines like real soon.
Deadlines on Wednesday.
That's real soon.
Yeah, so I mean, are we really submitting for something else?
For Ridge Road, I think he was just saying if things, you know, with Ridge Road, we're still working with the engineer and getting cost estimates, and if things change, we may have some flexibility to work with the grantor if we actually got the grant, but yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I get it. That's fine.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of submitting the ARPA H2O grant for the Ridge Road Stormwater Project, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I'm sorry. Mark, we didn't hear your vote?
It's unmuted.
That's why we didn't hear your vote.
So what was it?
What was your vote?
You're unmuted.
Okay.
Thank you.
You do sound healthy. Second on my agenda.
Is there anybody opposed? Please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Second on my agenda, we discussed at workshop, it's really more of just a change order or relocation of the vortex that we have for the MS4 projects. We originally were having the vortex placed down by Philip Green Park, but after a further review by the engineer, we felt that the West and Third Street intersection would be a better location for this. For those that don't know, it's where sediment goes, settles in prior to going into our stream systems. And then what we will do is we go in and clean those out. It is part of our MS4 requirements through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So it's no change in dollars, it's actually just change of location. And hopefully, you know, if the project is somewhat less burdensome at Third Street, that the cost may even be a little bit lower than anticipated. So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the change order for the MS4 project from Philip Green Park to that of West and Third Street location.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the change order as described by council member Robinson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And one advantage of being first on the agenda is I get to be the first to wish everyone here this evening and everyone in the Borough a very happy, safe holiday, and most important, a great, happy, and productive 2023. Thank you.
You're here. All right then, we will switch over to council member Joy Washington for personnel announcements and any action items.
Thank you very much. My first item of business is authorizing the advertisement of three part-time parking enforcement officer positions at $20 per hour, and this will be around 20 to 25 hours per week.
I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion or questions concerning the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing the advertisement of three part-time positions for parking enforcement officers at a rate of $20 an hour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right. And my next item of business, which is more of an update, it's about our tentative agreement of our collective bargaining agreement with the media police. More details will be shared about, you know, numbers and everything will be shared at the January workshop. So this is more of a update since we, you know, like me and the Personnel Committee have met with them like nine times at this point, and the rest of council doesn't really know like the specifics of everything that went down. So we want to go over that in January. So I do feel like I'm owed a Christmas invitation by them as an honorary family member with how many, like, with how much time that we've spent with them. But anyway, I don't think I need a motion for this one. It's just just an update, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that concludes my reports.
Yes, thank you. And to all of the members of the Personnel Committee meeting and office staff that accompanied Personnel Committee members, it has been a long haul, but it's been a productive one, we believe. And we'll have the opportunity to talk about it in detail, as council member Washington has pointed out in January. But I'll wait for the invitation, too. All right, any comments or questions for council member Washington at this time?
I just wanted to kind of jump in again with regards to our negotiations with the police. They were long, they were lengthy, you know, the meetings weren't 15 minutes long, they were two and three hours long, and there were nine and 10. I will say that I think the Personnel Committee led by our chairwoman, we've worked very well this time. This is, I believe, my sixth time I've done contract negotiations with our police department, and without a doubt, this was the most pleasant one. I firmly believe that both the Personnel Committee and the individuals who represented the media police department, we really had, we really took the time to talk and listen to each other to recognize the needs of the Borough, but more important, to recognize the needs of the department. And they are changing. You know, police officers of this day and age think and are looking for other things than what police officers were looking for 15, 20 years ago. And it was important that we communicated that. And I firmly believe that at the end of the day, you know, we will have a solid new contract with the police department, but more importantly, developing a stronger and more healthy relationship with the police department. And again, a lot of this goes to our chairwoman, councilwoman Washington. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we'll move along then to Media Business Authority Vice President Elizabeth Romaine.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a few of the other council members have alluded, it is that special time of year, there's a lot going on. I really encourage everyone to consider shopping local and dining local this time of year. If you know anything about small businesses, you know that oftentimes their business model really makes their money between Thanksgiving and New Year, and this is how they can make the year. And obviously, you know, we have a wonderful, vibrant business district and business community. We want to keep them in business. We want to keep them around for next year, so please consider dining local first and shopping local first. Just a couple of other announcements. Since this is a busy time of year, there's a lot of activities that are going on in town, many that are sponsored by the MBA. There is a hot chocolate stand that's going to be at Palm Street Mall this weekend, as well as carolers and gift wrappers. And I believe members of the EEC will be out giving some reusable bags in support of the ordinance that's going into effect next year. So a lot will be going on this weekend, or yes, this weekend. We will be reviewing momentarily a mass gathering permit for our annual New Year's eavesdrop that's going to happen. So consider going out for that. That's really fun. And I will be talking a little bit, in a little bit, about a new event that's happening in January. I believe it's going to happen before we're going to have our legislative meeting in January, so just wanted to mention it, which is going to be a new event, ICE on State. It's an ice sculpture event that's going to have a company actually making ice sculptures that are going to be placed throughout State Street and throughout the Borough, up to 20, hopefully more, where there'll be businesses and nonprofit organizations that will actually get like their logo or some kind of fun sculpture being made right there. There's even going to be an ice baby grand piano. So there's a lot of really cool things that are going on. And this is an attempt for the MBA, you know, to take a slow time of year, January, where there aren't a lot of people visiting and shopping and giving a reason for people to come into town, spend money, dine with our restaurants, and so forth. So really encourage you guys to put that on the calendar. I believe it's January 13th and, or excuse me, 14th and 15th, it's a Saturday and Sunday. So just wanted to put that out there. One other quick note is that parking is free in the Olive Street Garage throughout the month of December, again, in support of having people, visitors and residents enjoy the services in the business community that we have to offer. So please keep that in mind. I have two items on my agenda today. At the workshop meeting, I spoke about the appointment of Stu Eli to the Media Business Authority. He is a co-owner of Three Potato Four, which is one of the new businesses that opened up in media this past year, really adding to the retail mix of our town. The MBA has voted to recommend to appoint him, so tonight I'll be making a motion for resolution, I don't know if my glasses are on, 2022-53, the appointment of Stu Eli to the Media Business Authority for a term expiring of December 31st, 2025.
Second that.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any comment or questions concerning the motion?
I think it's very exciting that we have a retailer coming onboard. Some of those, you know, they're very busy, but to find the extra time to be part of the MBA, I think is great, particularly when it's a new business with new ideas. So it's exciting.
All right then, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-53, which will appoint Stu Eli to the Media Business Authority for a term that will expire at the end of 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. Second item on my agenda this month, as part of the new, Brittany, please correct me if I'm wrong, as part of the new banner policy that was adopted earlier this year, council is to review any requests for new banners, correct? So as part of the ICE on State event that I'd already talked about, this new one, it's a new event, so this will be a new request. The MBA is requesting to hang four banners from December 23rd of 2022 to January 16th to support and promote the ICE on State event. So do I make a motion for that, Brittany? Or is that, because it's written as a request. Do I make a motion to a request?
Yes, please.
Okay. I mean, just however you want to say it, but yes, motion to allow these banners.
Usually it's a different sort of...
So I just wanted to make sure that that was...
Yeah, you don't have to say request, or accept the request, or allow.
I will second that request.
Okay. Sorry. Yes.
So the motion's made. It has been seconded. Is there any comment or question concerning...
Just confirming that we're, the motion is for approval of this, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to make one other piece of context, was just that after you guys approve this one, any future ICE on State events will just be approved and reviewed administratively.
My only comment is that so long as they otherwise comply with our banner ordinance, which limits the amount of space that is used for advertisement, then I'm fine with it. All right then, so all those in favor of approving the request for the MBA's request to hang four banners for its ICE on State event, please say aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You added a condition at the end there, President Hall. Is that what we're voting on as well? Or are you just commenting?
If I may, so that's in the new policy for the banners that you guys approved, I don't know, several months back. It's already in there.
All right. So you were just...
So that was just a comment to support the banner policy that we already...
Aye. Sorry, sorry.
That's what lawyers would...
It wasn't really an emergency.
That's what lawyers would call mere surplusage. Too many words in English. All right, all those in favor of approving the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And that's it for me, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for our council member Romaine at this time? Pass the gavel. And I have a couple of items on my report. The first is for announcements related to community development and Harb. I have no announcements tonight. Item number two is a resolution that will require some action. Every year, we are required to seek an extension of part of our funding for the Third Street project. It is a RACP grant, Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant. And so tonight, I'll make a motion that we authorize a request for a 12-month extension, which will keep our funding in place for the Third Street project once we get to the finish line on deciding what that project will be.
Second.
All right. Any comments for President Hall? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion has passed unanimously.
I've got nothing else. Any questions or comments? Then we'll move along to council member Kevin Boyer, Public Safety, Recreation, and Civil Service Commission. Kevin?
Thanks, Mr. President. Couple announcements from REC. Winter Wonderland happened on December the 4th. It was well attended by estimate maybe 100 or so guests. We unfortunately operated with a very limited crew, so thanks to Lisa Gelman and Suzanne Ernest and acting as sanders helpers, but that went very well. Speaking of REC, we are currently down three members and potentially will be down to four, because I think one of our members is moving. So if anyone out there has any interest, please send a letter to the Borough. You can find the information there. And we could use some more members, even if you just want to volunteer. You don't have to be an active member, but obviously, we need some, we need some help. Related to that, not only are we down members, we also down our administrator, Paula Tenaro, resigned after 16 years of great service to REC. So we are deciding where and which direction to go. One of the suggestions would be to have somebody who then participates in events and also works with the MBA. So we have a little work to do to decide how to fill that position and what to do, but we definitely need something in that context. Regarding public safety, there was a meeting a few weeks ago with the, another Providence, Upper Providence, Middletown, along with Scott Price from the fire company. He's the EMS person. About the EMS, in that way, at least the other townships are aware of the fact that they will have to put up some money, as we are doing, in order to fund the proper EMS care. So we did have a meeting. It was productive. And again, the other townships are aware of that, and I think they're willing to cooperate and hopefully will move forward with that stuff. All right, as far as action items, number two is the ordinance to dissolve the Board of Health. I think our solicitor has drawn up. An ordinance, we decided we don't really need the Board of Health because of the county taking over restaurant inspections, so I move that we adopt ordinance number 1157 of 2022 to dissolve the Board of Health.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion or question concerning the motion?
And Kevin, just for clarity, it's really on the lines that because the county created their own Board of Health, they supersede the local board.
Exactly.
So there's no longer a need for...
There's not really a need for...
We're not even really authorized to have a Board of Health.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there are any other questions or comments, I will call the question. All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 1157 of 2022, which will have the effect of dissolving the local Board of Health, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was an aye from council member Pagoff.
Yes.
Sir, any, any member of council who was opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three is to authorize our solicitor to draft an ordinance repealing the food establishment's ordinance. And this is, again, is relating to the, I believe it's relating to the Board of Health not doing the inspection. So I vote that we authorize the solicitor to draft the ordinance repealing the food establishment's ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any comment or question concerning the motion?
It's housekeeping, you're saying, Kevin?
I think that's what it comes down to, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, you have these words in our ordinance that have no effect whatsoever.
Right. Okay.
Also, there are two provisions under the restaurant ordinance, depreculate sidewalk dining and something else about the sidewalks. I'm going to move those out of that section into the sidewalk ordinance. So it's got to repeal the whole thing. It's kind of moving some things around.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. I'll call the question then. All in favor of authorizing our solicitor to draft an ordinance repealing the food establishment's ordinance, with the exception of sidewalk maintenance and sidewalk cafe seating licensing requirements, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, and we have one mass gathering permit. Public safety won't meet until next week, but this is a pretty standard event. It's the ball drop, which is on New Year's Eve, and that would be from 9 till 1:00 a.m. and that's our annual ball drop. So I move that we pass the, or approve the mass gathering permit for the New Year's ball drop on State Street.
Second.
Motion's been made. There's been a second. Is there any comments or questions?
Twenty-second year.
I have one, I have one for you, Kevin. What date?
Would that be Saturday?
December 32nd.
December 31st.
For you, January 31st.
All right. Okay, so I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for this year's New Year's Eve ball drop, the 20, how many was it, Paul, did you say?
Started in 20, in the year 2000.
Twenty-second, okay. All in favor of approving the permit application, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I think item number five is another kind of a housekeeping to authorize a solicitor to draft the annual traffic parking ordinance amendments. So I move that we authorize a solicitor to draft those amendments.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any comment or questions concerning the motion?
Kevin, once again, just for clarity, this is really if we've added a stop sign during the year, if we've taken, put up or taken down a handicapped spot, that type of housekeeping matters. It's not like we're changing our traffic-
No, it's just all, all a matter, like you said, including-
Just for clarity for the residents.
All right then, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing our solicitor to draft the annual traffic parking ordinance amendments, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, and the last item, as you know, we are down a few police officers and civil service has been administering tests, and there is a list of eligible candidates for the three open positions. So I would like to ask council to vote that we, trying to phrase this pretty, to ask for the qualified candidates, the list.
Request a certified eligible list for the civil service-
Commission.
Yes. Sorry, I move that council request the certified eligible list from civil service for the police officer candidates.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion or question concerning the motion?
Kevin, just for clarity, that doesn't mandate us to necessarily hire the three officers. These are just an eligibility list of-
Exactly. These are candidates that have been vetted and have gone through the exams, and this is the list that they currently have, and since we have three open positions, we need to have at least five eligible candidates based on that number.
I believe we have a comment or a question from our manager. Ms. Forman?
Yes, I'm just trying to think of how it relates to the conversation that just happened. And Bob, and Solicitor can chime in here, but I think the discussion before you can, you know, get that certified eligible list from CSC, you guys have to have a discussion of how many vacancies you're trying to fill. And so that is, as you mentioned, there are three vacancies, and if that's, if you're telling CSC, we have three vacancies, then they can go ahead and put together their certified list, eligible list, which by law has to be so many more numbers than the vacancy that you have. So just wanted to make sure that it was clear that you guys are discussing and understanding that you have three vacancies and making sure that that, you guys are all agreeing with that, and then you guys request that list from CSC.
Let's get confirmation from our Solicitor on that point. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything Ms. Forman said. You, you could do the one by one, ask for a list of three, hire someone, then ask for another list, and then ask for another, or you could ask for a list, assuming there's going to be three vacancies. I don't think you are required to, I mean, you need to settle on how many positions you're filling, is where Ms. Forman's going with that. If there is disagreement about the number, you need to have that out now.
But I think to clarify, we have, we have the possibility of three vacancies, and due to the fact that we have the three vacancies, the civil service require, then we would require to have a list greater than the three, and that's why we would need to have five minimal people on the list.
Right. And my understanding is we were trying to fill three positions, that's the number that, yeah, so we would need at least five candidates to be able to-
From the civil service exam, okay.
Right.
So we're really just looking for five, the minimal of five candidates.
Minimal of five that have been recommended by civil service, right?
Based on their top results.
Could you repeat that comment, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, five based on their test, you know, they've been ranked, I believe there was, you know, a dozen applicants, they've been ranked on their test results, you're asking for the top five.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, unless there are any other comments or questions, seeing that there aren't, there are not any, all in favor of requesting a certified eligible list from the Civil Service Commission for three eligible positions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Pekoff?
Aye.
Any opposition? Please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Any questions from council for Councilmember Boyer at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to Councilmember Peter Williamson, Finance and the Shade Tree Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately for everyone, my report will be a little longer than usual because there's a number of action items to pass, including most substantially next year's budget. But before I get to that, let me make some Shade Tree announcements, because they, the Shade Tree Commission compiled a year-end report about their activities for the year and forwarded it to me. It's pretty impressive. Nineteen trees sadly were removed from Borough Streets or Borough Properties this year, but 48 were planted, including 37 street trees, so a more than two to one replacement. The Shade Tree Commission has also started putting profiles in the e-newsletter of trees that they are recommending to private landowners to plant, and I've been heartened by the fact that so far, the three I've seen have all been native trees and are great trees. So I certainly hope that our citizenry take up reading those things and actually go out and purchase them. Lastly, the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society has a program called Tree Tenders. It's been around for quite a while, it's quite successful, and it teaches people how to take care of trees, both public trees and their own, and they offer trees to people who are interested in planting them and taking care of them. And so far, one of our Shade Tree Commission members, Julie Smith, has been able to have, through this service, eight trees planted on private properties throughout the Borough without expense to the Borough, so it's been really great. All right, that concludes my report on Shade Tree. As usual, my first action item is the recommendation that we ratify the payment of bills in November. We drew from the general fund, $359,485.85. From the recreation fund, $2,952.31. And from the capital fund, $138,918.74. I move ratification of November's bills.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any comment or question concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ratifying the payment of the Borough's bills for the month of November from the general recreation and capital funds in the amounts specified by Councilmember Williamson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President and everyone else. Item number three is an ordinance setting the millage rate for 2023. Well, we set it every year, whether it changes or not, this is an ordinance that happens every year, but this year it is changing. If you were listening to the Borough Manager while she gave her excellent report on next year's budget, you will know that our current millage is 1.81 mils, and next year it will be 2.0 mils. An average property owner in media will be affected to the tune of about $65 over the course of a year, which is, you know, it's substantial, but it is spread out over the course of the year, if you're paying a mortgage. That will provide about, about $200,000 of additional money, which we will be targeting toward investing in capital projects. So I think it's a wise move, and as you know, the budget has a number of different revenue enhancements, this being one. So I recommend approval.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any comment or question concerning the motion?
As, as an elected official, I might get flogged for this, but I actually applaud Finance for deciding to do some sort of a minimal real estate increase. In, in any governmental entity, we have extremely limited opportunities to generate revenue, and if a town is growing the way media is with projects that we want to do, need to do, the only way these projects can get done is by, you know, looking at minimal increases and by proper savings, then those minimal increases, you know, can be put to significant projects that will generate just even a better community than what we currently have. So I applaud Finance for that.
Any other comment or question from members of council? I will call the question then. All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 1159, which will amend our parking, oh, sorry, I jumped the gun on that. All in favor of adopting ordinance number 1158, which will set the 2023 millage rate at 2.00, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Paul, for those kind comments about the Finance Committee. I really appreciate it. Item number four is, is interesting. It's related, and again, it's a revenue enhancement item, and it is, it's a way for us to, you know, increase our revenue and also get some payment for the impact that everyone that comes and parks in media has on our streets, you know, congestion and wear and tear. Parking fees are really, I think, an excellent public policy because they're, in a sense, an impact fee. For years, Media Borough has had very low fees, and we've decided because we want to do more capital projects sustainably, that we are going to look at parking as one of the ways in which we can increase revenue. Note that the previous ordinance, increasing the millage rate, will produce about $200,000. These changes that we're proposing today in ordinance 1159, changing the hours to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, increasing the rate to $1.50 from a dollar, will net $600,000 in additional revenue, three times what the millage rate does. So the Finance Committee is trying to distribute the impact of the need for revenue enhancement across sectors and has placed most of the burden on people that impact our streets and not people that live here. Just a little bit of background, I recommend we pass ordinance 1159, and I so move.
Is there, there is a second on the motion. Is there any discussion or question concerning the motion?
Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, we are just basically in line with other communities of our statute.
That's correct.
So it's not like we're going above and beyond, so we're-
No, no, we're more like Westchester, but not like, say, the main line. The main line would be much more expensive.
Thank you.
All right, I will then call the question. This time I'll call the question right. All in favor of adopting ordinance number 1159, which will amend our parking ordinance to extend hours until 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and increase the rate from $1 to $1.50 per hour, beginning this January 1st, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Before I move on, just to comment, in Ms. Washington's report, you noted we were going to hire some new enforcement officers. That's related to the change in time and the rates and so forth, because without enforcement, we won't collect. Okay. Item number five is really the big one, that's the adoption of the 2023, all the budgets, the general, capital, liquid fuels and recreation budgets. So you know from the, our manager's report, that the largest portion of this is our general fund. The capital fund is for things that we spend on that last a long time and goes up and down this year. It's half the size it was last year. Liquid fuels is related to how much money we get from the state, and it's used for paving. It stays about the same between $120,000, $150,000 a year, same this year, and the recreation budget has been very stable for years. There was a lot of work done this year, and I will reiterate what the Borough Manager already said. We have been, we've been doing a lot of projects lately, a lot of infrastructure projects, a lot of capital projects, and we've spent a significant amount of our savings that we have built over about a decade doing that. And I give the staff tremendous credit for recognizing the coming problem and, and changing our approach, basically by, item number six, which I can't, I'm not adopting now, which is doing a capital improvements plan, so we know what we're going to spend on year in and year out, and in this particular motion, building into our general operating fund an 8% surplus built into it that we know we can transfer to capital projects. We've never really, in the recent past, built in a known surplus. We've just used whatever surplus resulted to put into savings. This is a new approach, it's much more sophisticated, I like it very much, and I move approval of the final 2023 general capital, liquid fuels and recreation budgets.
Second.
Motion's been made. There has, there is a second. Any comments or questions about the motion before I call the question?
I'd asked in the past, and I'm sure it'll be the same answer, would there be any chance that we would adopt each individual budget separately? Because I do have questions or issues with our general budget, but recognize the capital budget and our liquid fuels and recreation. So I have asked that question in the past and have not been successful, so I won't ask for a motion unless others think that it would be appropriate to adopt each individual budget. I hear nothing, so move on, Mr. Williamson.
I think I made a motion.
Yeah, if there is a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any other questions or comments concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the final 2023 general capital, liquid fuels and recreation budgets, as described by Councilmember Williamson and as detailed earlier this evening by our manager, Ms. Forman, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Aye, those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, item number six is the adoption of our fir-, well, I guess that's not our first, it's probably our second, but vastly improved capital improvement plan. In the presentation Ms. Forman did earlier about the budget, you saw just one very small piece of it, which was the cash flow analysis that the plan allows us to do, making sure that we know that whatever we plan on spending, that we will have revenue to sustain that spending, which is just, just a great, great improvement over our ability to forecast than we've had in the past. And as I said before, what I've noticed in the Finance Committee meetings is the remarkable degree to which the entire staff is on board. It's not something that's being imposed on anybody. Everybody wants to see this kind of planning done. So I move approval of the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any question or comment concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2023-2027 capital improvement plan, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Item number seven covers the unfortunate circumstances that occasionally happen when there are stray dogs in the Borough, and we, they need to be boarded somewhere. there are stray dogs in the borough, and they need to be boarded somewhere until their owner is found or they're otherwise adopted. So we have a contract, we've had it in the past, this is just a renewal, with Brandywine Veterinary Hospital for the boarding of these stray dogs. I move approval.
Second?
Second?
Motion's been made, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or question concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with the Brandywine Veterinary Hospital with regard to the boarding of stray dogs, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
The last item on my report is a resolution implementing a Commonwealth Act Number 57 regarding, it's called Property Law Penalty Waiver Provisions. Every municipality in Pennsylvania has to pass this thing. It's related to how property owners pay, I think, late fees or something like that related to property taxes. If council would like a full explanation from our Solicitor, I'm sure he will provide it.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah, it's a new law that allows or requires the waiving of penalties and late fees for delinquent real estate taxes in the first year of somebody buying a property, where they claim they did not receive the notice because they either purchased after the tax bills are mailed or the tax bill was mailed to the prior owner. So it's, it require, and for whatever reason, even though this is the law of the state, they want every municipality to adopt a resolution ordinance stating what the state law is on this issue.
Being a dutiful municipal official, I'm happy to do as the Commonwealth suggests and move approval of this said resolution.
Second?
There is a motion and it has been seconded. Thank you, Solicitor Scott. Is there any comments or questions from council concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 2022-54, which will implement Act 57 of 2022 with regard to property law penalty waiver provisions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That, dear colleagues, concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Williamson. Are there any questions or comments for Councilmember Williamson at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to the report of Councilman Pakoff, the Environmental Advisory Council and Library. Councilmember Pakoff is with us, although he is far away, so, Mark, unless you tell me otherwise, I'm prepared to deliver your report.
Yes, the doctor advised me not to speak very much, which I'm sure bothers a lot of you, but...
Thank you, Mark. His answer was yes. So environmental advisory and library announcements, I have an announcement of sort with regard to an EAC matter, and for this purpose, I'm going to do an awful lot of reading. This is a report that was prepared by Councilmember Pakoff as well as our grants administrator, Karen Tausig-Lux. I cannot improve on the language, so I'm going to read it. As a preamble, it was earlier, goodness, time just flies away, within the past week, the EAC held a meeting and 16 Bryn Mawr students presented their findings on sustainability efforts in Media Borough. As an aside, what a wonderful presentation they made and what a wonderful advertisement they are for all women's colleges. I will read the report that's been prepared. 16 Bryn Mawr students participating in the college's praxis program spent their fall semester analyzing four separate areas of sustainability in Media Borough. They shared their presentations at the December 8 meeting of the Environmental Advisory Council, providing detailed information on their subject areas. There are four subject areas. Number one, the energy saving assessment by the students at Bryn Mawr College found that Media Borough's energy saving projects since 2012 have saved a total of $267,800 in cost savings and a reduction in more than 990,000 pounds of CO2 emissions. The programs included installing motion centers for Borough Hall lighting, transitioning to LED lighting at Borough Hall, switching the lighting in the garage to T8 fluorescent lighting, switching streetlights to LED, and switching providers from Pico to Constellation. Bravo to previous councils for being so proactive. As an aside, I'm reading word for word. What's it, previous councils? Item number two, one group of students focused on waste management and reviewed the composting program in the borough, comparing it to a program in Freiburg, Germany, which they visited during the year. Media's composting and recycling programs have resulted in a decrease in trash costs with an expected increase in weight of composting. Going forward, the students recommended Borough Council consider expanding composting, creating additional education programs, and implementing dual stream collection of glass when available. Item number three, a third group of students evaluated the borough's need for electric vehicle charging stations. They recommended that the borough launch a pilot program, installing several stations on side streets and parking lots, as well as at Borough Hall for public works and potentially the police department. The costs could possibly be absorbed by grants. Item number four, the student, I'm sorry, the final student team discussed transitioning to a fleet of electric vehicles with Public Works Director Mike Green and Police Chief Matt Egan. Chief Egan has concerns about keeping the emergency vehicles charged when they are used for extended periods of time, including idling. Director Green has similar concerns about power, especially extended outages during snowstorms. Also, there are, as yet, no EV alternatives for dump trucks and heavy-duty vehicles. The Bryn Mawr team recommends adding the necessary charging stations and the gradual transition of vehicles as technology improves. Once the students submit their final reports and recommendations, the EAC will develop an action plan. There are three action items under Councilmember Pakoff's agenda or his report. All of them involve the Environmental Advisory Council, persons who are stepping off, or a person who is stepping off, and persons who are stepping on. Item number one is a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Greg Krikovich from the Environmental Advisory Council. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Hearing none, or are there any questions from present on the motion? Sorry. All right, seeing none, no, seeing no comments, all those in favor for the resignation of the EAC member, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has passed unanimously.
I don't think that we heard Councilmember Pakoff.
There was a cough.
I thought, I apologize, I thought I heard all.
He said aye.
Sorry, Mark, for forcing you to speak. The next...
...to great contribution, but you'll have to do that in January.
Yeah, so what Councilmember Pakoff said is that he will hold over until January comments about Greg Krikovich's service to the EAC, which was considerable. The second item is Resolution 2022-55, it's the appointment of Ron Joines to the EAC for an unexpired term. That term will expire December 31, 2022. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Any comments?
I think it may be the shortest appointment I've ever voted on.
Hearing some or none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
The resolution has passed unanimously.
The third item, action item, under Mr. Councilmember Pakoff's report, is Resolution 2022-56, which, if passed, will appoint Dana Marks to the EAC for the unexpired term expiring December 31, 2022. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
All right, a motion has been made, and there's a second, any comments?
A question. Brian, you may not know, and Mark may be able to squeak out a simple answer, do both these folks intend to keep going?
Yes.
Oh, thank goodness.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. The reason being that the January meeting will happen before legislating.
Okay, thanks, Mark. You've done enough for one evening, you've been heroic.
All right, any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. The motion has passed.
Although I hesitate to make this offer, is there anybody in council who has any questions or comments for Councilmember Pakoff at this time?
We just have to wait till January.
Wait till next year.
You're off the hook, Mark. All right, then we will move to our second public comment and privilege of the floor opportunity, Karen Rapinoe. Have we received any comments or questions by way of email since the start of tonight's meeting?
No, very quiet tonight.
Thank you. Is there anybody present here tonight who wishes to speak to council at this time? Please come to the microphone, tell us your name, where you live, what's on your mind.
It wouldn't be a Borough Council meeting if I didn't ask a question or two. So Michael Straugh, 499 West Jefferson Street, apartment 507. I simply just had one question on the capital reserve. I just wanted to know, because I had gotten a chance to look over the proposed budget, I did not see what the capital reserve fund was at the moment. Do you have a number of where it is right now?
Ms. Foreman?
In terms of what's in the account right now?
Yes.
The last I heard, it was about $980,000.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Straugh. Anybody else who wish to address council at this time? The microphone is there and it doesn't bite. Seeing that there are no other takers, and before we take a motion to adjourn to all, we wish you a peaceful and joyous holiday season. Hope that it is safe. And to echo Councilmember Robinson's wish for us all, let us hope that 2023 is a productive and joyous time for all of us. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion's unanimous, good night, folks.